Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Here.
Councilmember Zabel.
Here.
Mayor Ranky.
Here. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the agenda before us that was provided in our packet. Upon review, councilors, were there any changes that you want to make or any adjustments? Could I have a motion then, please?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the agenda is approved as presented. First up then would be approval of minutes. And in front of us tonight, we have two of them. One is from the workshop for June 14th, and one is the Oakdale City Council regular meeting, also June 14th. Taking the workshop first, upon review, did you see any adjustments or changes that you'd like to see? Could I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Also then, the Oakdale City Council meeting, minutes from June 14th, upon review, were there any adjustments or corrections? Can I have a motion then, please?
Don't move.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These meeting minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is something we call the open forum. Open forum is a chance that anybody who wants to speak about anything going on in the city can sure do so. We ask that the person comes up to the podium and state their name and address and then share with us their concern or their compliment. It's really a three-minute time period is what we recommend, and it's not a time for dialogue, really, it's information gathering. So is there anybody here that would like to comment? Seeing that, I'm going to close that open forum and move into the next agenda item, which is consensus motions. In front of us tonight, we have A through M. Councilors, where any of them want to be removed or discussed?
Mayor, I'd like to pull consensus item B.
Okay. Anything else? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus items A and C through M as presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those motions are approved as presented. Councilmember Olson, you asked for item B to be removed. What are you thinking?
So, item B is an agreement with the Metro Bow Hunters for a deer hunt to reduce the population in the city. I don't believe there's consensus, so I just wanted to separate vote.
Okay. Do you want to by rule call or just a general?
Just general.
On favor, yea or nay?
Yeah.
Okay. So can I have a motion then on item B, which was the authorization for the agreement with the Metro Bow Hunters Resource Base?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motion B as presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So it's four ayes, one nay. The motion passes as presented. Thank you. Next up is time with the advisory boards and commissions. This is just a chance for us to update because each of us are liaisons to the various commissions that we have in the city. The first item is the Economic Development Commission, and because there's no meeting, there's no report. The Environmental Management Commission meeting, that also was no meeting, that got canceled. The Planning Commission, there was no meeting. Parks and Recreation Commission was canceled, and then the Tree Board, we met. So, if you'd bear with me, it's just about 35 minutes. It's really a nice report that I'd like to give.
Yeah.
And I'm going to read verbatim. No, no, no. So, good session. I excused myself there for about 20 minutes, but we talked about the success of the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway, the 23 budget and the plans for the future Arbor Day events. We also talked about the Summer Fest, the filing period for the upcoming council seats and mayoral seat. And then I talked a little bit about the Oakdale Golf Outing coming up and the fundraising for it. And then the new business that was talked about was a little bit about the Emerald Ash Borer and that removal update, and then the fall buckhorn removing, fall buckhorn removal schedule in the site that is being contemplated. So, good group. Moving on to the next item, which would be the Award of Bid. And let me just get caught up here. Let's go to the, there's really no bid awards, so let's go to the staff reports and community development. The one that we're going to take up first is the Animal Emergency and Referral Center of Minnesota. Luca, you can handle this one for us? Good evening.
Good evening again. Luke McClanahan, city planner. So this request for a variance from, for additional signage, the location is 1160 Helmo Avenue, this is the new animal hospital being built there. The request is to enable five additional wall signs on the new structure, and the applicant reports that the additional signage is for, to help direct visitors on the site seeking emergency animal services. The property is zoned commercial, and in the commercial district, there is a limitation for wall signs allowed. And this request is for a total of nine wall signs with, whereas the allowed limit would be five, excuse me, four, four wall signs. None of the wall signs would exceed the allowed limit for square footage for wall signs. And so the application meets the review criteria for variance per the ordinance. The applicant did notify neighboring property owners, and there were no objections. Staff recommends approval of the variance request, and the planning commission voted six to zero to also recommend approval of the request. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Luke. Excuse me. Counselor, anything? Any questions? What I found helpful on this was the, in the planning commission report, you actually went through and answered the questions about the five questions that have to be answered affirmatively or reasonably before a variance can be granted. So that was helpful. And the other piece of this is the highly commercial nature of the site, very few residences. So this makes sense. Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number 2022-69, variance to allow five additional wall signs on the property addressed 1160 Helmo Avenue North.
So is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Luke, can you take us through this home occupation too?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this conditional use permit for home occupation is located at 66 193rd Street North, and it is a home occupation for a photo studio, fully contained within a newly-built detached garage. The property is residential, it's located in a residential neighborhood. Hours of operation, as reported by the applicant, is going to be 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with sessions by appointment only. Typically, there's only going to be one client at a time on the site. Applicant reports that there's sufficient room for parking here on the driveway, up to six vehicles can be accommodated in the driveway. And the applicant is going to be the only person employed for the use. Much of the sessions, the photo sessions, would actually occur off-site, so at parks, other venues. And in reviewing the general and specific review criteria for conditional use permit, staff has found that this request meets those review criteria. Staff recommends approval of the request. Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counselors, anything for Luke? Councilmember Zabel.
Luke, can you talk about the times for hours of operation? That seems a bit restrictive to me. Was there, was that the request of the applicant, or was that a restriction imposed by staff or the planning commission?
So that is the timeframe that the applicant reported that the use would occur, so Monday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Looking back historically at previous resolutions for similar home occupations, all the, they list the timeframes that are allowed for the use, just to make sure that, you know, you're not having additional foot traffic or customer traffic on sites. I think, Chris or Jim, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think as council, you have the discretion to adjust the resolution or the timeframe that's listed within the resolution.
Thank you, Luke. City Administrator Walkers.
Yep, Mr. Mayor of City Council. So several of you mentioned to me that you did think it was restrictive, and the applicant, it looks right, the applicant asked for it, so they just went with it, right? If you would like to expand it to give the applicant some leeway, that would probably be appreciated. We did go back and look at other home occupation businesses that Luke mentioned, and the hours are in there, but they're all over the place. So you have some flexibility if you want to lighten that up, but that applicant did offer that. So just so you know.
Chris, the one thing that I noticed was because of the Sunday piece, that's a little bit unusual, Saturday and Sunday with people coming, even though it's minimal number of people. I said, well, they must know their business, so I was comfortable with it. But if councilors want to do something a little bit expanded?
Would there be concerns just to do business hours, even though it does extend to Sunday, and just say eight to five?
I wouldn't support that.
Okay.
I'd support Monday through Friday, eight to five, and then nine to three on Saturday and Sunday.
I'd go with that.
So who wants to make that motion?
Let me think. So it's...
If you want to, otherwise...
The time is one of the conditions, so we'll just adjust the condition.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. So I will make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number 2022-72 for conditional use permit home occupation for a photo studio on the property addressed 6619 3rd Street North, with the conditions included in the attached resolution adjusting the times on condition one to be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? I'll ask the question. Luke, after just hearing this brief conversation, any concerns about that?
From a planning perspective, I, no, no concerns in terms of the hours being adjusted. This is relatively low intensity use.
Yeah, like very...
Right.
Okay. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes as adjusted. Thank you very much, Luke. We're going to have the park dedication fee schedule revision. With us tonight is Community Development Director, Mr. Getzlaw. Good evening.
Too intimidated at this spot, so I'm going to go right here. All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. So the park dedication updated fee schedule is for you here tonight. This has been the subject of a few workshops to date to, really to ensure that the fee that we propose is reasonable and based on standards that are in Oakdale. And it gets back to, you know, what is our current park system? We've got about 17.4 acres per 1,000 people, and this maintains that standard as we continue to build out. I will say that there is, you know, room for improvement as we embark on further parks planning activities to adjust this fee going forward, but this gets the city in a really good spot to help to plan out its future development. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you, Andy. Counselors, anything for Andy? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number 2022-73, amending the 2022 fee schedule for park dedication.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? My discussion piece is on timing of implementation. We have another discussion going on. Andy?
I'm sorry.
Is that, is there anything we have to clarify?
No, this is for the next item, just jumping ahead.
So on this one...
Getting presumptuous, sorry.
Yeah.
We're approving this thing tonight. My question was, when is it effective, and are there projects that are in the hopper that are certain ways that are going to fall under this new deal, or are they going to fall under the old deal?
Mayor, there is nothing in the hopper per se that's, would be affected by this decision here tonight. It's based on the current fee schedule, so like Impact Apartments was based on actually the old 2021 fee schedule. So be any new applications coming forward, and we actually haven't had any this month. So we won't actually have a planning commission this month either, so. And I believe it does go into effect once, once council passes it, unless I'm corrected by the clerk on that.
Okay.
Or Chris is head nodding.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So is a motion discussion, or second, is discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Andy, will you take us through the next one too? Oops, nope. Luke, are you going to do this?
Mayor, since I'm up here, I'm going to, I'll handle this one. And there's apologies for a little bit of a language change with some negotiations between the applicant and legal that didn't quite make it into the online version of the packet. And I'll just defer to the clerk and Chris, what the procedural lead to, what's changed is basically the, be it, be it further resolved, before it referenced a special lot consolidation agreement. This is a little bit more specific to what we actually would like to have done. So basically, I'll read it, what the new be it further resolved is, and then I'll just kind of explain the rationale, and then answer any questions.
And Andy, excuse me, just to give context, anybody that's watching this, this item is the forefront, it's the amended preliminary and final plat for the Oakdale Farm, third edition.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the statement is, be it further resolved, that lots two and three must be developed simultaneously in conjunction with each other, as if they were one lot instead of two separate individual buildable lots, and that no separate development can occur on either of those lots. And the rationale for this specific language and the rationale for why we're amending the plat is, when the applicant went to file it, the county, because there's both torns and meets and bounds, they couldn't combine those two systems into one lot, so it inadvertently created an additional lot. We recommended the applicant come back, amend the final plat, make it clean for when they file it at the county. And this is the special protection, in conjunction with our, our city attorney recommended this language be added, so that, you know, they don't just get a bonus lot because of the technicality, and, you know, they would have to come back for future approvals anyways for those lots with the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant's also here tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Questions, City Administrator Walkers?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor of City Council. So this proposed resolution that you just received would replace the current one in your packet, which is 2022-74. So the, you pulled the one out that was in there, we'll upload this online if approved, and this would be the one that's signed, adding the clarification for the be it further resolved, adding another be it further resolved. So just to be clear.
And Andy, the developer is your representative, conversations, everybody supports these, this change?
In earlier conversations, yes, was supportive.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Counselor, anything, questions for Andy or developer? Could I have a motion then, please?
I lost it, sorry.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution, amended resolution 2022-74, approving the amended preliminary and final plat as requested by Larson Family Real Estate, L L P, plans dated 6/3/2022, with conditions as outlined in the resolution.
So is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
I have a question. Is that date in the motion accurate if something just changed?
Because it looks like this is, yeah. Is what accurate?
The dated, dated plans?
All the date.
Yeah, the plans referenced in the motion were dated. Have the plans changed? No.
No.
It was just the resolution.
Okay.
Yes.
And the city attorney, Thompson, is nodding.
Correct.
Affirmatively.
Yeah, okay.
So is a motion, is a second, there was a question? Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes as amended and presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to note too, that the applicant does intend to break ground within, you know, a matter of a week or so, so project is moving forward.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you, Scott. City Attorney, time, time with City Attorney, Mr. Thompson.
Mayor of City Council, there's nothing specific to report, but happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Counselors, anything for Jim? Very good, thanks, Jim. The City Administrator, report, Ms. Walkers.
Mr. Mayor of City Council, I don't have anything additional, but I'm glad to answer questions.
Okay. Counselor, has got anything for Chris? Okay, council presentations. I think I'll start on my right. Mr. Britson.
Just thanks to city staff and everybody involved in Summer Fest for all the work.
Yes. Anything else? Councilmember Olson.
My second, what Jake said. Thanks, everybody.
Yes. I'll third that. And, you know, between the police department, public works, recreation, forestry, city staff, volunteers, making the Summer Fest redone or recreated or regelled, Summer Fest just marvelous. We were blessed with some beautiful weather, some great tunes. It really, really was nice. So thank you. Thank you for everybody. Counselor, Swedberg.
I think we all agree with that. I think it, Summer Fest went off very well, and I'm so proud of everyone in our, in the staff and the police force and fire department, everyone, the park and rec, they all did a great job. the park and rec, they all did a great job. So thank you very much. And then, of course, we're always looking for ways to improve Summerfest, so I talked to several people at Pancake Breakfast and at the park, so we're going to be gathering that to discuss that in a few weeks, so. And if so, if you have any other ideas, or you have some ideas, please submit those, so. But I'll be submitting what I learned when I talked to several residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zabel?
Nothing for me.
You know, the other two that I want to mention, we were notified earlier this week from, or last week, from Chris Wolkers, that our city, as we obtained the bond rating increase. So the AA1 rating that we now have is a result of some pretty good work. Jason Zimmerman, Finance Director, Chris, you were heavily involved, Kyle, our accountant, but then also the department managers and the staffs about how they wisely use resources, and also then the community development and the growth that's taking place in our conservative policies, all led into that, and the net-net to our residents is that it's going to cost us less to borrow money to do the things that are important to do for development and enhancement of the life, or quality of life. Let's see. Yeah, that's good enough. Then the last thing is the claims, and in front of us, we have the claims. Don't have my cover sheet.
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah.
Did you ask Kevin if you had anything?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed it. I'm sorry.[1691.42][1691.45](laughing).
Yeah.
Didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
I have nothing tonight.[1695.81][1695.84](laughing).
I got it, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So the last item in front of us are the claims, and so we have in front of us claims from the period of June 11th, 2022, through June 24th, 2022, in the amount of $526,016.53. Upon review, councilors, did you want to ask questions about any of them, or have them removed? Could I have a motion then, please?
Motion to approve claims is presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion on the second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those claims are approved as presented. Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of...
Is a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.